Call this meeting to order and acknowledge that the Tumwater School District sits on the ancestral lands of the Nisqually, Squawson Island, and Chehalis people. I thank these caretakers of the land who have lived on and continue to live on this land since time immemorial. Please rise as I lead us in the fold.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under one principle, liberty and justice for all.
All right, if you are here to speak, please sign up with Becky if you haven't already done so. If you're online watching and you'd like to speak, then email Becky Powell at B E C K Y dot P O W E L L at tumwater dot K one two dot W A dot U S. And email her no later than six ten P M. So you can get on the list. When we have a lot of people speaking, it's the the time limit is twenty minutes on any one topic. Even if you're tricky and try to put multiple different topics, we will figure it out because we're smart people. We're going to stop you. But it's twenty minutes. It doesn't mean is so if you can get all your stuff said in a minute, it leaves time for more people to speak. The first speaker gets five minutes on the topic, and then each additional speaker gets three minutes. And it's all based on when you email Becky. That makes it nice. So if there's so if anyone wants to speak, we would love to hear from you. So Superintendent Dotson, have there been any changes or additions to the agenda since it was?
We the recognition we had scheduled for tonight, we've tabled until the May agenda.
Okay.
Superintendent's report was added after action items. We added an executive session that we were talking about but didn't have on the agenda initially, my mistake, and that's to evaluate the qualifications of a candidate.
Okay. Graduate that graduation procedure.
A lot evolving right now.
Yes, so many things. Okay, so is there a motion to approve the agenda as changed?
Move that we accept the agenda as changed.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Now consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to read through the consent agenda? So is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I would like to make a motion. I'll second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Wow, we've got a great little system when we're all aligned. So much easier than when we're on a screen. Okay, so now we're to our. Rebecca.
Sure. You can hear me? Okay. Hybrid going because they're reporting improvement in mental health and grades, and they're just really excited to be back. The other group is the exact opposite. So Group C, who's completely virtual, are safe now and celebrating that yay, we're safe, but have. So now that support system is gone. So I'm not quite sure how, but it's some needs to be some sort of support.
Okay, yes, thank you.
Kind of extreme example in one of my realizing that once they move away from the computer, we can't hear them. We're trying to listen to the lecture, but we're straining to hear, and it's all muffled. Oftentimes, I'm not sure why, but their volume on the computer is off, so we get a way of contacting and letting them know, hey, we can't hear. And sometimes I've had a couple away completely from also it's just like, where did the teacher go? And one might come back for like a full hour. It was just felt like they'd been forgotten. And I've heard reports of that happening in classes as well. So things like that. And then I also asked about how to recover lost learning. And the results I got were a little confusing. So forgive me as I fumble along and attempting to explain this. The question was up to interpretation, so it could be interpreted as how do we help the kids who failed this year, who weren't able to learn virtually like at all? But then it could also. We covered less curriculum this year because we were virtual, then how do we recover that learning, that lost curriculum? For I think in general, see like, yes, we got to help the kids who failed, that makes sense. But then the other interpretation, the word punishment came up at least five times. Feels like some sort of punish. So like I gave some ideas like summer school for the kids who failed, like yeah, that's accepted, we're used to it, that's the norm. But then the of having summer school for everyone, that just it feels unfair, especially to some of us who really tried this year. Students seem to like the credit retrieval classes and the after-school support or extended day programs, provided that it doesn't interfere with extracurriculars and those kinds of things that help our mental health and that help us teach us valuable life skills and it doesn't interfere with other things, they're more open to those kinds of arrangements. There's also a small rumor going around, like I think freshmen through juniors being held back basically a year. That's I didn't even put that on the survey because that was just, I don't want to start that fight. Definitely not taken well.
That's not going to happen. I mean, they earn credits. You earn a credit, it's a credit, you can't be held back for that.
Whatever you do, please don't waste our time and make it keep it keep it fair to those of us who did put in time and effort. And a lot of students don't understand what lost learning is, so whatever you do decide to do, if it's for everyone, make it clear it's not it's not because you did something wrong, it's because juniors couldn't cover as much curriculum as usual. And I think especially like the freshmen, because going into high school, they had no idea what the curriculum was supposed to be like, and they saw this. And now they think that this is normal when it's like half of normal. So that can be a little confusing there. Yeah, that's what I have.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rebecca. Ms. Ella.
Hi, so when I asked peers like, what do you think we should do about that, you know, we're not learning as much, like we're, you know, we need more learning happening right now. And I brought up the idea of summer school for that. As she did, everyone was saying like, that just seems like a punishment. One of my friends. Tangent, you know, it's not our fault that this happens. Why should we be punished like for? I interpreted it as lost learning as like, you know, not learning as much through new market and just like extracurriculars, so you know, that's but um. And then people were saying like, well, we could do like maybe only a couple people brought this up because I like added this. A couple people said like, well, we could do like.
Do we have any questions? That's really helpful because it's not it's not meant as not meant as punishment. I also. Bristle at this learning, this whole learning loss level, because we all learned what we learned in high school, not the same. A year apart because he's older, but. Take the same classes, and he's got. So it's just an interesting idea.
You need to come up with a plan and submit a plan. We're less able and maybe haven't advanced as much, and that might put them behind. And that's how are we going to work to recover and help everyone get back where they're on pace with their peers? And I think one of the things we know is that this is a year unlike any other, so we can't really compare this group this year with any other group that we've had. It's just not the same. And what we also know is that not like kids haven't learned anything in the last year. They're 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 learning. And in fact, I I see I see little kids right now with computer skills I've never seen them with before. And so they've maybe learned that aren't going to show as well on our tests in the same ways, but but they've been. And that's super helpful feedback. Thank you.
Lifeboat, the lifeboat was supposed to be compared to switching to the hybrid. But I wouldn't say that a person is like a lifeboat, but the students are in the life.
Got it. Okay. You share you my daughter in terms of you guys have both decided to stay remote for for your own personal reasons and. Yeah, it's it's in and it's. Need, do you want to go back? And the going back is not is not what it is during the normal year. And so some people chose to stay remote because of that. So we want to make sure that everyone is getting what they need. So how do we?
That mentioned of.
Yeah.
A teacher having faces. Faces and them on their iPad with Zoom. Knowing that. Face the devices facing at me, facing at you, facing at a screen. That's what I call the choreography teaching. All high school teachers, so from North Thurston, White Pass to Aberdeen, they're all struggling with that choreography of, oh, yeah, I forgot to talk to these. Partners with these kids, but those kids don't have their computers open.
Right.
It is quite a dance. It is a very technical dance, and it takes a lot of practice.
And there's there's also an audio aspect to that, because like students on a Zoom call can hear the teacher, but can't hear the students in the. It doesn't repeat every little thing the students in class say where. Half the conversation, and it's kind of an important conversation to be able to follow.
I first got on the board, there was I had to zoom into a meeting. The same exact, it was just one computer. The only person I could hear was Jim Britton because the way his voice frustrating as a board member to try to figure out what was going on with the meeting.
Keep working on improving in that area.
Yeah.
And there's some technologies that sometimes too, like. That a per teacher can use. Some of our teachers.
A minute ahead. A recognition, public comment, follow-up, and by the numbers, Doctor Dotson.
So we didn't have any public comment at our last. So there's the but what I would say is we continue by email. To hear a lot of perceptions our community have regarding going. Increased in-person learning or full in-person learning and a variety of across that continuum, as you can imagine. And so I appreciate the feedback, it's helpful, and I. Continue to people to know we're we're reading every bit of it and following it or listening, and and we can't we can't meet every perspective on it, but we're sure letting it inform our thinking, so. Do have I I'm really bringing this back tonight, so I've got some numbers for you because I think they tell a little bit of a story of where we are. So the first number I have for you, oh, my gosh, I put it in the wrong order on some of.
Oh, no. Yes, the number, yes.
Jeopardy.
So the number is the number is zero. And and this may be repeated in the slides because I copied the slides, darn it, I missed that. So it is the number of confirmed cases of COVID transmission in our schools thus far, which is really good news. Now, you know, when there's not a zero transmission in our community, we can't necessarily expect it will always be zero in the schools, fourteen days of instruction that that could that we could reclaim if we make that shift. And you know, I sent I put a letter out to the community on that last night saying, here's where we are in our process. If we're taking this week is is to say, we have some things we can gain from it. Now, I have no idea when I go to this next slide, if you're going to see a number, an explanation or the whole thing, to be honest, it's kind of a it's kind of up in the air. We all see it all. So seventeen, we're just won't have any guesses here. That's the number of students. This is this is among the problems we're facing.
Yes.
So it's the number of students who can fit in one of our elementary typical elementary classrooms during mealtime. And the reason that's significant is because while while we can, as we shift to three feet, the guidance says we can actually space students at three feet in the classroom, which would allow us to have a full class. But as soon as they take their masks off for lunch, we now have to spread to six feet. So you set your desks up for three-foot spacing, and then when they take their masks off, you've got to move them to six-foot spacing. And then you've got to figure out what do we do with the additional students? Because the number of our elementary classrooms are between twenty-two and twenty-seven students. So that means you've got five to ten students that you can't now have in that classroom. So our principals are working through problem solving on that. At the elementary level, this is particularly challenging because we've we don't have cafeterias in all of our elementary schools. Peter G. has the cafeteria, but but a number of our schools do not have a cafeteria. So our students are eating or a substantial cafeteria, so the students are eating in their classrooms. So when we have breakfast, for example, the kids come in, they get their breakfast, it's a they go to their classroom and they eat. When they're at six-foot distancing right now, they can stay right in their seat, take off their mask and eat, and we're still following public health guidelines. Now, if I have ten kids in my class who are eating breakfast, as I told the principals this morning, they said, so what happened? I have some of my kids who aren't eating breakfast in the classroom, some who are. So if I have about ten kids in my classroom who are eating breakfast, and they take off their mask to eat breakfast, do I have to have them six feet from all of the people? Yes, that's the answer to that. So some of them are saying, all right, now we maybe need to flip to having breakfast somewhere else. If you don't have a cafeteria, the only space you might have is the gym. So if you set your gym up with tables for breakfast and lunch now, now you have P E can't be in there anymore. Now, if the weather stays like this, that's not a problem, but we're in Western Washington. So so this is the kind of problem solving they're doing right now to try and say, how do we make all of this work so that we can safely put students where they are? And so if we have students that if we have ten students times ten classes, that's a hundred kids, we've got to find a place for them to have lunch. At six-foot separation in one of our gyms, we can seat about sixty-five students.
And we don't want to start lunch at nine thirty.
No, my kids right now at Tumwater High School having lunch about ten thirty in the morning, I think, is so it's kind of brunch, but we're doing multiple lunches. At the secondaries, they have the same problem, we're using cafeterias. And maybe just an example of that is here's the Tumwater Middle School cafeteria. And so the way they've got it set up is everyone's distance six feet, so that and actually it goes out into the lobby. They have a lobby area we're also using during our lunches so that we can seat all the students. That's with half of them there.
Yeah.
When you double that number, now we've got to have twice as many places for students to sit or double the number of lunches, which does mean you you can't start lunches at nine A M. So we're still working on problems. I'll just share a second challenge. All those desks?
Need to be used for the classroom.
We got those out of the classrooms when we took half of the desks out of the classrooms. That gave us a place to seat to have students sit and eat. So this is a complicated, this is a complicated puzzle. I just kind of sharing that's that's the stuff that is making this more difficult than it might look at for. A rate of one hundred and twelve cases per one hundred thousand over fourteen days. And while we might think maybe that's not as critical for us to be as closely, we actually make this shift as long as we stay below two hundred cases per hundred thousand. We've been plateauing right at around a hun between a hundred and a hundred and ten, bouncing up and down. There's a concern about spring break activities, and if people in watching any major activities that result in a spike in that rate, like Pierce County is is in that situation right now, we could get and make sure we do this in a manner and a structure that allows us to flip back if needed. So, oh, well, there we are. And and there's another number, and I'll show it to you more, or I guess I have it on here right now. There's our March ending fund balance, and I think when I showed you before, I had a concern we would be lower than that. But once we got everything in, we have actuals now, we are a little bit better than those projections were, but that's still less than a two percent fund balance and lower than what it was at this time last year. So continues to be a concern. We have substantial federal dollars coming, which is good. One of the things that I'm advocating for with legislators, and I know Darby's been doing so as well, is just the concern that if if the state were to not put any funds behind our lost transportation, lost enrollment dollars, we would end up having to use that federal funding that's designed for for learning recovery and supportive students to backfill some of the losses that we have on our local budget or more of it, and that's not what it's intended for. So we're in the middle of sharing information with them on that. So but just to give you a look, there's last year compared to this year, the the red is this year's line, yellow is last year's line. We'll get our levy payment and we'll be well above our minimum fund balance. Last year, you saw we rose in the summer, but oh, I should say, you saw that you saw that big rise in the summer. We don't expect that rise to be as big this year because some of that was capital projects staff charged to back to the capital projects. We might have some rise because we'll also be able to charge some COVID expenses into there. So there should be some growth. I think we'll come out above minimum fund balance this year, and we're confident of that. Are we becoming to you concerned about that right now? So I'm not concerned about meeting that target. However, we can't continue this trend of going lower and lower in the winter months.
Right.
And that's something that that we're watching very closely and concerned about. So that's what I have for this part of the meeting.
Any questions? For his numbers? I just I just had a comment that in my work life here, the frustrations of staff of yet another change. And so I am so proud of our staff here in Tumwater that they're embracing this as an opportunity and trying to figure it out because it's it's over it's overwhelming for for people. And I'm just really, really thankful that our staff is doing that. And I hope you can share that with the principals and that they can share with their staff how appreciative I am that they are trying to figure this out.
Certainly, during my superintendent's report, I'll probably I'll brief you on a couple of the additional challenges we're working through, but that those numbers kind of give you they're they're doing their best right now.
I don't want this to go unsaid as six to three speech. I cannot stress this enough that we honor and respect our elementary teachers' planning time. And that they get a duty-free lunch. And I know that impacts where kids will be. Aspect of entry education that they have to supervise, whereas older kids don't necessarily need to be supervised, but we cannot sacrifice their duty-free lunch and their planning time to make it happen.
All right, now it's time for public comment. So Becky will be calling on people in the order which they email her. And is everyone on the same?
No. Three topics, three people, three topics.
Interesting, we'll see. There are three different topics.
You like the Gong Show?
Oh, Gong Show, I forgot about that show. That ages me. Okay, so. So the first, the first person on each topic, each different topic receives five minutes. Every speaker after that is three minutes. And I don't want I don't want to be rude about it. If it really is this. Please don't make me piss you off every minute. Yeah, but there's only three people, so I don't I don't doubt that we'll be able to hear what we need to say, but. It's really, I love hearing people, everyone knows this is my body. I love hearing people. I'd like to talk for an hour, but unfortunately, people have to go home at some point. So the board does not discuss personnel matters or matters involving student discipline in an open meeting. And so if you have any of those concerns about a topic, then that should be brought up to the superintendent. And right now, it's your time to present to us. We don't engage in a conversation, we present, we hear, and then Sean responds back at the next meeting after we're able to follow up. All right, Becky, who was our first person? All right, Becky, who was our first person?
Um, it's Nina Rice. Do I go up here? Yes.
Yes, we'll get you in the microphone.
We do not want to let it be turned on.
Hopefully so.
Hello, hello, am I on?
Yeah.
Well, thank you Superintendent Dotson and school board members for allowing me to speak today. This is my first meeting I've ever attended. I've attended via Zoom, but this is the first time in person. My name is Helena Rice and my husband and I have a third grader at East Olympia Elementary and we have a freshman at Tom Water High School. We're also business owners, very invested in Tom Water. We own Rob Rice Homes, so we develop and build new home communities. We currently have five neighborhoods in Tom Water and a little over four hundred lots right now that we're building in. Today, I'm not here to talk to you about my children or my business. What I am here to talk to you about is special services and how special services has gone on with remote learning. We adopted a young boy at birth. He is in third grade and he came to us with some very special needs. He has an IEP for reading, for writing, for speech, and for math. His Zoom sessions have, all of his special services classes have been on Zoom. And it's 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 been and one word for me is it's been sad. To protect the confidentiality of two of the students in his Zoom class, I have changed their names. And the first boy I want to talk to you about, his name is Tommy. Tommy is eight or nine years old. He is on my son's Zoom classes with two to three other children. His dad is sitting right next to him in a chair with a beverage that most of us would enjoy later on in the evenings, perhaps. He's talking on the phone to his buddy loud. Tommy can't hear the teacher, the teacher can't engage with the other students, and my son can't hear the education, nor can he be engaged. Tommy gets very frustrated. He turns his chair to the computer. He throws things at the computer. And quite frankly, the teacher is at a loss. She's not trained how to deal with the Tommies with remote learning. The other child I want to speak to you about today is Suzie. Suzie is at Boys and Girls Club, also eight or nine years old. Suzie is at a very long banquet table trying to get instruction remotely on the Zoom call. There's kids playing basketball, there's kids yelling, they're running, they're having fun. They're not all on a Zoom call like she is. Suzie can't learn this way, nor can my child learn this way, nor can Tommy learn this way. Superintendent Dotson, I was so happy to see your email yesterday come through with the hope of starting school in May. But your last bullet point that reads, review agreements with employee associations has me scared and nervous. We in Tom Water have been through a terrible strike here way before you, and I'm glad you're here. And I hope that you can mend that relationship and that you will have an agreement with the association. Because because that is my fear. I urge you to work the hardest you can to get our kids back in school. My freshman is struggling with mental health issues. You all received a letter from sixty-two healthcare professionals urging you to open our schools up. These doctors don't have anybody to refer these parents to for mental health anymore. They're booked up two, three, four months. We have to help these kids. And and again, I go back to special services. If we stay in remote or case counts go up and we go back to remote learning, we have to consider these children that are on IEPs that can't learn this way and the teachers that are trying to engage kids that in most cases have focus issues. They can't pay attention. So we're doing them a disservice. You all took a took an oath or took a or agreed to advocate for our children and the families of Tom Water and and do it for the Tommies and do it for for the Suzies of the world. Thank you.
Sorry.
No problem. Drop the mic, yeah, that's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so Reyna Longward is going to speak to equity and she's on Zoom.
Okay.
So I'm hoping that this works. So we have to go.
I'm gonna bring our screens up here if you don't mind. Also, I block screen this thing while I can bring it down to minimize.
And so Reyna?
Reyna.
Reyna, can you hear us?
This is the first time.
You hear me?
Oh, yes.
Ready?
Okay, your time's starting now.
Okay, great, thank you. Good evening, Dr. Dotson and school and school board members. My name is Reyna Longward and I have two elementary age kids in in the district. I know one of the biggest focuses for the district is the equity among students. Well, I can tell you that this high red learn. In equity among our students. I've had teachers tell me there are students who don't open their backpacks on the days they're learning from home to do their homework and have fallen so behind because of schools being closed and now in hybrid. How is that okay and equitable? Why are we not aggressively working on opening schools full time to ensure we're bridging the gap that keeps getting wider in our schools and districts? I'm here on behalf of my own kids and so many other kids and families asking you to please open the schools and be equitable to all kids. At this point, all teachers who have wanted to be vaccinated are fully vaccinated. We have had the CDC and the governor's office advise for schools to be open as much as possible. And in March, the governor stated that schools can be open with three feet in between students. And this should not be the reason why we aren't opening schools. Some say it's only three months left of school, so we should just continue with hybrid and start full time next year. I'm here to urge you to start full time right now. Get these kids back in school full time and show our county and other districts that you care about the children, their mental health, and ensuring there is equity among all students. We need to listen to science, to the experts around the country, and look at the example that's been set by numerous school districts, both public and private in our state and all around the country. Schools can be opened fully and students can be back in school and teachers can be safe. It's being done daily all around Thurston County in private schools and all around the state and the country in public schools. Please open the schools full time and open them now. Thank you.
Thank you. How how long was that, Becky?
All right, and who's our third person?
Megan Gordon. And she is wanting to speak to kids' mental health.
Yes. Hi, my name is Megan. I have two kids in the school district, young children. When the pandemic started, I'm an accountant by trade and I expected my phone to be ringing with PPP. How are we gonna save small businesses? I work with small businesses exclusively, so every text message I got was about, how do I get this money? What am I gonna do? It quickly shifted till the word got out that I knew a good child psychologist. And I went from thinking the scariest thing I was gonna have to worry about was money to worrying that I was gonna lose my kid. I have a kid who is full of life, who loved his school, loved his teachers. I asked him, I said, Bud, I'd like to speak at this meeting tonight and I feel like you need to tell some of your story. Said, but that's gonna mean that that could put your privacy at risk a little bit. Goes, Mom, everyone knows who you are. And he said, you know, I think we need to talk for the kids who don't have a Mrs. Parkinson. That is our pod teacher. We need those kids to have a Mrs. Parkinson too. We have a pod school. During the last thirteen months, we've lost loved ones. My husband and I's family are aging. We own multiple businesses in Tom Water. I've watched restaurants go down and gyms. And it's nothing like checking on my child to make sure he's okay at every moment and not wanting him to be alone in a room by himself. When I talked to our school counselor, she made a phone call to me because he had typed something into her his browser that scared her. She said, I know him so well, Megan, what's going on? So I'm here to talk to you that this is not the only kid. I cannot tell you, running through my neighborhood, how many moms you all know who are active in this community, who we would never think, who can get their kids help, are asking me for help. And what about the ones who don't have those resources, who are sitting at home with parents who can't, for whatever reason, help them the way they need help? I went to my kid's doctor with tears down my face and I didn't know whether to feel better or worse that she told me that she can't even count how many mental health kids she's seeing with needing antidepressants, who are now way overweight and who have addictions to technology. So we've sat back and we've watched our leaders. We're we gave you our support. We're still giving it to you. I've talked to you, doctor. I really appreciate you having those conversations. But we've also watched us, our kids have suffered and they're not suffering a little. This is not learning loss. This is we're losing these kids and we don't know the damage we're doing. I have keep hearing this phrase about resiliency. Kids are so resilient. That we have a whole generation of millennials who spend more money in therapy than they do on mortgages because we put them through trauma. So what what society are we that we continue to put kids knowingly into a traumatic situation? I know we didn't know what was gonna happen. I know we're all doing our best. But now we need leadership to step up. So I'm asking you to do this. We need change. I'm really hoping that we'll see that and that this this crisis will be enough to kind of push us over the edge. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, I know that this topic will be, I have a lot to say, but we'll talk about it more during the superintendent's report, so I don't want to preempt any of that conversation. Does that sound fair? Okay.
So stay tuned.
Okay, reports to the board. First reading of policy and procedure twenty-four time graduation requirements.
Yes, so the these would have been Sean Batstone's general idea, but I'm gonna present them on his behalf tonight. So what we have, the high school graduation requirements policy was last updated in two thousand thirteen. And we've had a lot happen.
Lots of changes since then.
Yeah, so we've moved from a twenty-two to a from a twenty to a twenty-four credit diploma at the state level. We had twenty-two. We were above the state requirement, but and a number of things have changed in this since two thousand thirteen, so it was time to do an update. But WASDA did such a renovation of the policy and procedure, the way they're constructed, that 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 we really wanted to take some time to review it. In fact, we we had this on the agenda to do this last spring and then when COVID hit, we said there's other things that have to take precedence right now. So we've come back with this spring, we've had a chance for our high school principals to take a look, and and this is the outcome. And so what you'll see here, the policy itself, I can be very quick on because it's super simple. The the our previous policy was about a five page policy. And they've reduced it down to saying there, because the board approves both policy and procedure twenty-four ten, it's not as important where information resides between policy and procedure. And they had some information in both previously. And what they've done is they've just gone really general in the policy and put all the detail into the procedure. And I think that makes good sense because then you're looking in one place. I used to have to look through policy and look through procedure to make sure I had all the information. So what you see in the policy right now is simply the four major areas. You'll see requirements for graduating, a short intro, and that's completing our credit requirements, demonstrating college and career readiness by completing a high school and beyond plan, completing a graduation pathway, and completing a senior culminating project. And then it says all the detail is gonna be described in procedure. So the the policy, first read wise, it's it's pretty simple.
Yeah. Then you get to the eighteen page procedure.
Then we have an eighteen page procedure. And 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 if you've had a chance to kind of go through that, I'll I'll just take you kind of down through summary wise. I'm not gonna I'm not, we're not reading through this whole thing at this point, but to give you the basics. It notes we've gone from twenty-two point five to twenty-four credits. We still note that because the classes of sixteen to twenty still fall under that and we have some students that won't graduate out that are still under those prior requirements in our system still. So eventually we'll update it again and take that out and say this is the the new requirements. The period of eligibility to earn credits really talks about how you earn credits if you're a middle schooler. We have some middle school classes that are high school classes that that students can earn credit for, that they're equivalent to a high school class. And so it this procedure details how we do that. There's no major changes in this from our previous, but it's been moved around and 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 some wording updated. For students, what's interesting at the seventh, eighth grade, so if if a student takes, say, an integrated one course at in eighth grade, they get high school credit for that. Previously, you had in the classes up to the class of two thousand twenty-four, this year's freshman, previously you had the parent had to ask for that to be put on the high school transcript. And now it just switches to the the way they've switched it. They said now the parent has to ask if you don't want it on your high school transcript. This much simpler in that regard. If there's a reason someone says I don't want to get credit for it, you don't. There's some general language around how we award high school credit. It's fairly simple and 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 what you would expect. But then you see how it goes into detail about how students earn credits from a number of places. Credits from other programs when they transfer into our system. So we will take this noting that we take credits from other high schools, other systems, and it'll go into deeper detail in a variety of places. But then you'll see a couple of pages that really just detail the state graduation requirements, the credits you have to have. So pages three, four, five are really detailing the twenty-four credit diploma and what is within that twenty-four credit diploma. And so we follow the state on those requirements. So up to that point, that that would take us up to page five. Is are there any questions you have in those first sections that would be important? And and there's a lot here, so I just want to make sure I check that. On page five, you'll see a section around how we set up alternative learning plans for students in alternative programs, how we monitor those plans and and ensure that they that they get credit. All of this is things we currently do because we follow the state laws and requirements. But not all, but it's making sure that the language here aligns with that perfectly. Running start, that it details the process on page six for students to enroll in, participate in, and get credit for running start classes. For college coursework, some students engage in college programs. It's not running start. So if you do something in the summer, say, take a college course, that that's not running start. But we can accept certain courses for that, some courses for credit in that, and so that details how we do so. Students may take out of district correspondence courses, participate in CTE work-based learning. And so this just takes you through piece by piece, how do we accept those credits? National Guard, high school career training. And we have a separate policy, so homeschool credit. WASDA's policy puts some detail in here on how to address homeschool credit. We have a separate policy that addresses that, so rather, so what we do is we refer to that policy. We'll be probably bringing that forward for a review soon because what we're trying to make sure of is that we review all of those graduation policies, but this is the first one, so. The high school and beyond plan requirement. This basically takes you through the state required high school and beyond plan that we really are using Naviance as our tool for engaging students in that high school and beyond planning process. So we have all of the state requirements in place. On pages eight, nine, and ten, it takes you through that whole process. If you want if you want to go into detail, if you have any questions in any of that from your review, if you want to know any more about any of those, please let me know. And so I'm at page ten, so I want to stop. In any of the sections you had there, have did any of you have any questions or concerns? Okay. You'll then see in pages eleven, boy, it's eleven through about thirteen, a variety of graduation pathway options. And we you you may, as as you go through it, a student can pass the state assessment. That's a pathway to graduation to meet the pathway requirement. Dual credit courses, demonstrating readiness by completing and qualifying for college credit and dual credit courses in English Language Arts or mathematics, in mathematics can can meet that requirement. High school transition courses like your bridge to college. AP courses, and you'll see international backglow, you might wonder why that, why international backglow, why do we have it there if we don't offer those courses? Well, if a student transfers to us and they have passed that, that is a pathway, we can consider a valid paths, pathway to meet the gra- this graduation requirement. And so, um, y- there's, there's some mixed methods, SAT scores, ACT scores, or a combination of these options in English and mathematics, so are, are ways we can meet that college pathway requirement. ASVAB, CTE courses, there's, there, so there's a variety of pathways we can use to help a student meet that high school and beyond planning, or the, the, uh, career pathway requirement. And so, we just detail those all out and how they work to, to meet that piece of graduating.
So, a question.
Yeah. Oh, is, is your.
Red light.
Oh, red light, sounds like that's a mute. I wonder if we could, if you tap that, it might, should go, the red light should go out. There you are.
Got it, okay. Okay, on the pathway options.
Yes.
Um, you might not know, but if there's a way to just take a, a look into this, I'm curious about specifically the class twenty-one, who hasn't had the S back now for going on two years. I don't know about SAT, if that's been offered. Is generally meeting this pathway requirement, not having those options the last couple of years.
So, the class of twenty-one, in a few minutes, you're gonna take action on a waiver that gives exactly, you know, that, that, that's, uh, the, the State Board of Education's given us some room that, where if we determine a student is ready and because of COVID, they haven't been able to fully meet one of these pathways, we have some flexibility to address that.
Okay.
But that's a, it's a really good question, that's one, one of the reasons you'll be taking action on that soon, so. Uh, but, you know, most students take the, the challenge at tenth grade. Class of twenty-one, many of them would have had at least that first chance to pass that. They, they wouldn't have had as many chances for those who didn't meet that the first year, would be the challenge. Any other questions about those pathways?
Well, just now that the state test is. Uh, well, I guess we're.
Taking it, um, and so that will be a challenge, so. That's part of the reason for a waiver process, so. So, there's a process for waiving student assessment requirements for the classes up to two thousand twenty. Once again, we haven't removed that, because you'll see the last line of that, the. Longer event two, and so that's for those students coming up to those classes, so. On the career pathway, and that's really determined by the IEP team. Uh, and detailed in the student's IEP. So, uh, so that, so the team meets and identifies a specific plan for that student and they follow that student, not necessarily, or that, that plan, not necessarily exactly the way this happens for students who aren't served in special education. On page fifteen, we're almost there, seal of biliteracy speaks to how students who are, are demonstrate uh, that they're bilingual by meeting pretty rigorous requirements in a, in a second language, uh, get a seal on their diploma and, uh, indicating, uh, that, that biliteracy. And then, in sixteen, uh, there, we, we then go into section eight is our graduation requirements that are above and beyond state requirements primarily. So, the thirty hours of community service, which you, 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 we waived for this class for the same ra- for the same reasons as we were talking about the other waiver, and the senior exit interviews, uh, they remain here in the, in the procedure and in our policy at this point as graduation requirements we have that are, that are beyond the state's minimum requirements and have been, uh, since the state dropped the requirement of a culminating project a few years ago. And that's something we can continue to discuss as we go on, because it is a graduation requirement that we hold that the state doesn't. Uh, but at this point, we felt, we, we wanted to update the policy and then if we want to have a deeper discussion about that later, we can have a discussion about, should that be retained as it is, modified, or, or at some point eliminated? And the last page, what is just, uh, some language around grad- the basics of graduation ceremonies, identifies that students, you know, uh, that some of the basic requirements, you gotta participate in rehearsal to participate in the ceremony, wear your cap and gown, that traditional regalia and items of cultural significance are allowed, that's something that's been part of our practice. And, and that we do have, under the last section, some ability and, and have had over some time to withhold a diploma. WASD has added that language to this policy. Um, and, and it makes sense, I think, that it's here, but it didn't reside in this policy before, that it's just students who have unpaid fines or fees. We can withhold a diploma or transcript until we get those fees paid. Uh, there's always, we always work with families on that process. And, and there's also some ability, though it's limited use, um, in a disciplinary situation, a student could be, um, kept from participating in a graduation ceremony. I have seen that a few times. It's generally in situations where there's, uh, something so significant that there's a concern about disruption to the graduation ceremony in that, in that regard. Um, and so, a- and they get their diploma in those cases, so that, that's a, that language has been included in this procedure. And that's a lot.
That's a big one, yeah.
But, wanted to make sure we have the chance to go through it well, because it's a first read, there's no decision tonight. But, take a look at that, if you have questions, concerns, certainly between, I can, I'll be happy to follow. So, I'll, I'll go right from that to first reading of the. Change in this is under passing subsequent core content courses. Last year, we had that specifically. Uh, and it's when you have a concurrent course, so students say fails first semester of integrated one, if they. Two, we could. Back and retake the first semester of integrated one, by passing the second. Could say you have, um. And provide credit back. What's in there is we've, we're opening that up of that conveniently work, but, um, what we're doing is, is that language to allow us to do so, we're, the, um, where we.
Action items. Resolution oh-six twenty twenty-one emergency waiver of high school. Credits. Put this on the floor. Someone might make a motion to approve this and then we'll have Sean put it on it.
I'm sorry, what's the motion?
I think it's your turn, Scott.
What's the motion?
Uh, approving resolution number oh-six twenty twenty-one.
I thought you said something else. Okay. We. Number oh-six two.
There's something that we need to waive in order there. There's, this provides us to, and if we determine that, that the pandemic has prevented them from meeting that, uh, meeting credit requirements or meeting these, the full graduation requirements, that it allows us to do so, we document what we've waived, we look at data, and, uh, we, we, we're thoughtful about equity and use of that. And we'll have to, you'll see, maintain data on that and review that data to make sure that it is used in an equitable manner. Um, but, this is, that's the intent and focus of this, uh, policy, is to give us some room in those situations where the unique circumstances have kept it, some students potentially from checking every box, though they're really ready to move on to post-high school pursuits, so. No changes in the first read.
Is there anything different about it than last year's waiver?
Uh, it, yeah, that, that, they added some, so, last year's waiver, they really, uh, it was a, they didn't have as much in, uh, focus around, uh, equity and use and tracking and disaggregation of data and follow-up. So, some of that's been added to say, let's, let's make sure we're really thoughtful about tracking that information.
Hmm, okay.
So, Rebecca and Ella, I am sorry to put you on the spot, but are there other concerns that you've heard about student, that students have about being able to graduate? I know my daughter was ecstatic that she wouldn't have to do a culani- that she wouldn't have to do presentation. She already had the hours, but are there other concerns that your peers have about maybe not being able to meet something in order to graduate? And if you can't think of anything now, then just bring it up to Sean, but I just, I'm sorry to put you on the spot.
Um, a lot of my peers are worried about, um, Naviance.
Uh-huh.
Getting that done, because a lot of people, me included, like, have barely done any of it. And so, um, yeah, the Naviance is a great.
All right. Rebecca?
That's the only thing I can think of as well. I know some of the communication has been a little difficult with Naviance. I'm pretty sure there's still some students who aren't even aware that Naviance is a thing, that they have to do. I can't imagine that being possible, just seeing how much I've.
Every week on Monday.
Exactly. But I know some students don't check those emails and, so that could be, that could be.
Does this, does this cover that part of it?
What I'd say, the language I see in it, it talks about credit and pathway requirements. It doesn't specifically speak to high school and beyond plan, but what I, I, I believe, um, so, so, so I don't see it speaking directly to that. And, um, this is based out of the authority given to us by the State Board of Education. So, if that, if this doesn't cover that and we have students in that situation, we may have to consult back with State Board of Education to say, what are our options here?
Okay.
So.
Yeah, may, maybe checking in with Jeff and Dave.
Yeah.
Um, about if they have concerns about that, uh, and what we're not.
Yeah, and it might just be a clarification, they might say, yes, this waiver gives you that flexibility to address that. Um, and if it, if they say, no, it doesn't, and we didn't give you that authority, then we'll have to work with students to make sure we can meet that high school and beyond, or, plan requirement. For graduation.
I would prefer to, to support that second thought that you just said in terms of, that's really helpful information here at this point in time, it's the middle of April.
Yep.
Be doing an assessment to see who, who's in that vote.
Yeah.
And doubling down on counseling and advising, or whatever it takes, because it's not, it's not just the checking of the box.
Right.
There's value in doing the high school and beyond plan to get you prepared for what's gonna happen after you graduate, so. I'd love to see some additional effort.
Yeah, it seems like in, it seems like we should be able to help students meet that requirement.
Yeah, yeah, the data's all in the system, about who's accessing it and who's not.
In a.
I hope Kino is accessing.
Quote-unquote, normal school year, would Naviance be? Is it solely on the student, or is it an elective, is it during homeroom, how is it managed?
So, this is our first year with it, and the, so, so the intent, it, it was, we were transitioning into this and we had a plan for this year, and of course, all plans had to be laid aside, uh, given the circumstances. And so, um, so it's, it's really aligned with homeroom.
Okay.
And that was the time that it was intended, the, the time students were intended to engage in Naviance was through homeroom. Uh, and, and they had discussed last year using, uh, our, the, the morning student time, using homeroom. I mean, the, the structures for that, so homeroom was going to be the key structure for that. We've talked about embedding it in courses potentially. Uh, and so, that's been an ongoing discussion as we dig into it deeper and saying, could it reside in certain courses? Uh, at the middle level, they do, uh, they are doing some work reside, putting, placing it into courses. And so, it's, um, I, I, I mean, it's, it's an issue under development at this stage. Uh, and, and unfortunately, this year made that much more complicated. And Sean could have probably said that better than, Batstone could have said that better than me and would have given you better information, but that's my issue.
And that is totally fine, that's why we have two Shans. So, okay, so, uh, any other questions before we vote on this resolution?
If we go back four days, when we go back four days a week, are we gonna have a homeroom plan in that schedule, or are we gonna be able to?
That, um, well, the, the time that, that really would, would ta- would take place is, we don't really have homeroom built into the during-school time. What we've done is, is remember, we've had to take forty-five minutes off of the, about forty, forty minutes off of the day to give our teachers some time at the end of the day to connect with their remote students.
Right.
So, that time is really intended as time for students to then participate, to, to engage in, in their high school and beyond plan work, their Naviance work. And so, while some of our students aren't using that time for that, that's the intention of that time, because remember, we have to, we, we have to count that as instructional hours. And so, that's the responsibility our students have during that time. Not all of them are necessarily engaging in it during that time. So.
But they are able to engage in it at any time.
Yes, yeah, it's available to them twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. Uh, but, 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 it sounds like communication and support is what we're recognizing, is that students may not understand what their expectations are fully and may not recognize the importance of that.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, with it being the first year, I don't doubt it, so.
Yeah, and, and that would have, there'd have been a much better chance of, it, it would have been much easier to help them understand that if we had been in our typical homeroom format, but that, that wasn't the case in the fall, of course.
Any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving resolution oh-six twenty twenty-one emergency waiver of high school graduation credits, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion passes. Now, we are on to superintendent's report.
Okay, I'm gonna pop my PowerPoint back up for a couple more slides. So, um, we've already talked about this a bit, but, uh, just kind of reiterating what went out in the letter yesterday, our target date, and we've been trying for, is to say, can we get to a transition by May third? What I've really asked our, I, I've said to our principals and our school teams is, this week is kind of our gut check. We have to say, can we get it done at all levels by that time? And what I don't want to do is do a poor job of transition, and I don't want to have chaos because we don't have everything in order. And so, that's, I think, that's what we're trying to, transportation, I've, I've got to check back tomorrow with transportation, uh, and, and beginning of the week to say, are we in place to do this? With building and grounds, I heard concerns from building and grounds about thousands of pieces of furniture that need to be moved and how stretched our custodians are right now. So, that's a, and, and I know I've, I've shared that with a couple of you, and, and I think there's some ideas. We talked about, do we hire a moving company, do we get volunteers to come in on weekends? We're having those problem-solving discussions this week to say, what does it look like to do that? And can it all be done in order to make that happen? I also had, at our, it, our secondary schools seem to have an easier time with the structures because kids are older and more independent than our elementaries in this. It's most complicated at elementary, and so the discussion we were having even this morning with principals is, can we do this at all levels? That's our intent, so the grade levels, we're trying for all. And we're saying, we're asking them, is there any reason we won't be able to phase this in for all levels? Are we gonna run into a problem with, with capacity at lunch or at other things where we go, we can't do it? We don't want that to be the case, but I need to be sure before we commit fully and say we're, we're in. The decision point is early next week, the intent is to, to have something else. So, I've said, we, we worked today, I've, I've got a meeting with secondary principals tomorrow. Um, and then, we'll, we'll, uh, beginning of next week, work to get a communication out and say, this is, this is where we are, this is our plan. So. Just, uh, underscoring that furniture issue, so, here's one of our elementary classrooms, and we've got it set up. Uh, teachers worked really hard to get things set, you know, six-foot distancing, get everything in good shape. All, you notice the other desks aren't sitting in there, they got moved out and into other spaces, so that, uh, and in certain classrooms, it may be a teacher did keep all the furniture, and that won't be so bad. Um, this classroom, fortunately, with desks, the, if, if we just get the other desk back in there, that's fine, as long as they're not using them in the lunchroom. Here's a different challenge. A lot of our classrooms have tables. Now, we, and we, when we bought those tables, unfortunately, nobody told us to prepare to have those tables ready to provide three-foot physical distancing in a pandemic. And I'd like to talk to the people at the company who sold them to us, so. But, that, that challenge is, is some of our tables might be perfect, we go, okay, we can put three feet between kids and have them at the table. If not, now we've got to decide, can, do we have enough desks in our warehouse and our in supply, which is, we're limited on, to replace those tables and pull those tables out and put desks in there? Uh, in some of our classrooms, you see, one of them here, they have a desk in between the table because, uh, to, as a way of distancing. Well, now, at three feet, we have to look here, can we have a kid at each end of this table and have enough space between them? If not, um, so, so that's where they're problem-solving what furniture we need in classrooms to make this work. Um, so, that's, that's just, you know, another of those, as, as we've talked about, a lot of complexities that we're, that we're struggling through, and we'll, we'll solve them. I mean, that, that, you know, we. And we'll, we'll solve them. I mean, that, that, you know, we've said, we know there's districts in the state who have already solved this and we're every bit as capable as they are. So I'm confident we will, but we've just gotta, we, we've gotta keep people putting their heads together and finding it. And, uh, as, as I've shared, we, we have to, e- even if we wanted to order more desks right now, we couldn't get them in time. It just, you, you, you can't get them in time to do it, so it would be a slow go. So let's talk about graduation. Um, this is a positive one because last year at this time, we were saying, we don't know how we're gonna do a graduation. And, and we were having graduation committees to try and talk about, what does it look like if we can only have fifty people at a graduation? Fortunately, the rules have opened up a bit. Now, we typically hold our graduation at Saint Martin's. This year, we made a decision this week that under the current restrictions, it is, we can have a much more, uh, complete graduation ceremony if we have it outside. So rather than going to Saint Martin's, we're gonna hold our, our comprehensive high school graduations in Tom Water District Stadium. Rain or shine. Um, so we, we've, we've made that commitment. Now that means we're out and gonna saying, okay, we gotta rent tents to go over the stage if the weather's not great. And we've got some, you know, they, they start talking about what if, uh, what if it isn't great? Cause our plan would be to have ideally, the students down on the field, parents in the, in the grandstands. And our grandstands are large enough at Tom Water Stadium that at twenty-five percent capacity, which is what we're allowed to do now, it gives us about six hundred people who could be in the stands at a time. So much better than last year when I was going, well, how many kids could we graduate at a time if we can only have two hundred at the total, at total? So we're, we're at this point now, as long as we don't fall back, uh, and we keep going forward. And by June, vaccination's supposed to be widespread enough that hopefully we're in a good place. We should be able to have six hundred plus and, and hopefully maybe it even gets better. But, um, we have Black Hills High School, each year, one high school schedules to go on Thursday, one on Friday night. This year, Black Hills is, uh, on Thursday, June tenth, Tom Water High School, Friday, June eleventh. When you have six hundred, uh, Tom Water, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Pause.
Yes, pause.
I'm getting that in my calendar.
Please. So when, when you have a capacity of six hundred, Tom Water graduates almost three hundred students at Tom Water High School. So they're discussing, do we do that in one ceremony and that would only allow a student to have maybe two people there? Do we split that in half and have half of the students and then in a ceremony, say at five o'clock and half at seven o'clock to allow them to have more family? So they're, they're working on making those decisions now. But it's a much better problem than what we had last year. And I think we're gonna be able to have a really meaningful graduation ceremony and I'm excited about that.
So Black Hills is keeping theirs on Thursday?
Yes, yeah, I got a confirmation this afternoon that they've decided to go on Thursday. So.
Okay, and then how about Cascadia High School? Has anyone discussed that?
Yeah, so.
Oh, look at that.
Well done. You, you, you peaked at my, my presentation. So they're set for June fourteenth, uh, which, what day of the week is that? I think it's some.
Monday?
Monday, uh, at six thirty PM in the New Market Skill Center Lecture Hall.
Oh, great, okay.
So that's our, that, that's the arrangement we have for our graduates for Cascadia High School. So I'll, I'll make sure to follow up with all this in my Friday memo to you too, in case you need it for calendar purposes. So I'll get those on the, on the long-term calendar.
So what, um, so are there, I understand Tom Water's concerns because their, their class is larger. Black Hills have concerns about capacity?
They're under two hundred typically in their graduating, graduating group. So you could, if you do it in one ceremony, each student could have three tickets. I think that's the discussion is what is that breaking point? Typically, you know, you'd like to be able to give them, uh, you wanna let them have as many family as they can there. Last year, those little individual recognitions, as hard as it was, they, they could bring a larger group with them to that. So we are, we'll also be live streaming these events, so family who can't make it in person can watch the live stream. But, uh, I, I, that's what we've gotta finalize and decide is, do you split it in half and allow more family tickets? Do you, it, it, we had this discussion last year with a much smaller, and what we heard the students say is, as much as possible, we wanna be together for it. That was the student feedback we got. So we don't wanna split kids up any more than we have to. And so we may have to get a little bit of feedback to say, is that one ceremony or two? We have the ability those days to do, do it either way.
I, I, I will say, cause we were at, we were at the graduations last year and it was a special time for those families to group up with all of their family members and the graduate in a very special way. And so, uh, I just.
Yeah.
I mean, this is the traditional, this is the traditionally what we're trying to do, but I, I thought it was very special how, how it worked last year.
Yeah, I think the schools worked really hard to make it something meaningful for the students and, and really, and, and it, it was unique, uh, certainly. But I do also hear a real desire and interest to have that graduation ceremony in a, in a way that, it, it's such a rite of passage in our society. And so I think it's, it's something our students wanna have, uh, if possible. So other senior activities, just know that they're also in the process of planning other senior activities. There's been discussion about prom events. You can't do a dance right now. But for our seniors, there is a potential for some type of a, a, a safe socially distanced prom event that we can do. And our schools are working with our nurses and with our, our administrators, working with student group leaders to say, what could that look like? So that's more information to come. Senior recognition nights, uh, that, we had a discussion the other day and at working with our nurses and looking at the capacities of our gymnasiums, if we use the full space and the bleachers, we actually can hold a senior recognition event in our gymnasiums. So that's what they're working, moving forward with some planning on. And so there's all, you know, all of those other events we typically have, we're saying, how many of those can we actually hold in a safe way and do them so that we are student, our, our kids can have, uh, uh, some of those events that they look forward to throughout their school experience? So more details to come, but I, I, that, that planning is in full motion right now. School board position one, we had, we, the position closed, we have an application received. You have that application there. We have an executive session tonight to review and determine, uh, next steps. We have a tentative interview date. If we choose to go forward with an interview, that would be Thursday, April twenty-second at six PM next Thursday. Unless that doesn't work for majority of the board, in which case we would need to, uh, adjust that. So just something that, that's, that's what we tentatively put on calendar for that, but we'll discuss that and make sure. And you've heard Scott already, uh, alluded to this, but we will not, students will not be taking tests this spring. That came out yesterday, uh, that news. So smarter balanced window will be pushed back to fall. And that will be, um, what that will look like in the fall remains to be determined. I mean, our, our OSPI is still in negotiations with Department of Education around what that is. And I think that's part of the reason is they had not come to an agreement yet on the path forward. And so they said, it's, we're, we're already into the testing window. And if we were gonna train proctors and test and go through all of that, uh, we needed to start yesterday or before yesterday. So, um, this, I, this is a welcome decision, though I don't love saying, welcome students, take a test. So we'll see how that, how, how that works out.
I have a question about what this means. It came out when I, when I saw the email. Does it mean those taking the fourth grade test will be in fifth grade in the fall? Or are they, are those taking the fourth grade test will be fourth graders in the fall?
I think it means that the fifth graders will take their fourth grade test in the fall. So it would be taking that test that they would have taken in the spring of fourth grade, but they'll take it in the fall of fifth grade. So.
Just making sure I was exactly clear on that. I, I, I did read the press release on it and the superintendent Rick Dell talked about the mental health of our students being one of the reasons. And I really, that's one of the reasons I was really hesitant about it when we talked about it in the, a few months ago, about not wanting to do these tests this year. Um, so I'm really glad that we've pushed this off till fall.
Absolutely. And finally, next Wednesday, all of our staff will be participating in a training focused on the Speak Up at School curriculum and our harassment, intimidation and bullying po- uh, policy. That's a, uh, so we'll have, we, we've, our schools are really trying to get all classified, certified staff, everyone they can in their buildings together for those. Some of our offices will be closed down during the time of that, that training to make sure our office staff are in there. We'll take attendance at those trainings. Anyone who doesn't attend, we're gonna have follow-up trainings to make sure we capture that. We do have some groups like our bus drivers that will have to find another way and time to do it. But our intent is to make sure all staff are trained, have the skills to respond when issues, uh, when issues come up of harassment, intimidation, bullying, or kids using racist or biased language, that they have the skillset to respond and practice in order to, to make sure we set a tone that we, we respond to those things consistently in our system and in a way that helps make positive change.
So if a board member wanted to participate, would, one, would that like be intimidating to others who are there? And, um, cause I don't wanna mess up the actual training, but, um, I'm not sure.
I would, uh, boy, I haven't thought about the intimidating to those, but I, I think if you're interested in having that same common training, I'd wanna encourage you to participate in that in some way. So we can, I can, I'll, uh, connect with our trainer team and see how we might be able to offer that to any of you who are interested in participating.
I would love to believe that everyone believes that we're people too. But some people like don't, may not be able to be their authentic selves if we're there and I don't wanna take that opportunity away from them.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be Zoom trainings and so they'll be, so, uh, and, and they'll be practicing with scenarios as well in small group and, and breakout rooms. So maybe there's some ways to make that, you know, certainly to make sure it's non-threatening. But, uh, I think if you're interested in participating in that, I'd wanna give you that opportunity. So I'll follow up with, uh, with information about that. Uh, well, if possible, I'll have it by the end of the day tomorrow. If not, I'll have it to you by Monday. But I'll get you times and information so you could look at that in your calendar.
Alright, thank you.
That's what I have tonight.
Uh, any questions for Sean? Comments?
I just have a comment. I know the, the email today, no, yesterday, the email that went out to staff and parents, that really caught staff off guard. They are far more used to the, to them getting the message first and then parents receiving it later on. So that they have time to digest, reflect, prepare. But it was all at once. That really caught them off guard and that really ruffled some feathers yesterday. With the potential of a move to a four-day week. So it's just something to be aware of. That was all. I just wanted to make sure I got that said.
Thank you for that. I did receive some feedback from some staff on that today and that certainly wasn't the intention. And I, I think we'll think through what in the process kept that from being, uh, coming out in the way that, um, well, we, we, we certainly don't want staff to be stressed by our messaging. And so that was when I saw that, it was, it, I, I felt really bad for those that, that were caught off guard by that. And so we'll look at what is it we can shift in our process so that's not the case in the future.
Yeah, I would agree with Scott on that as well too. I saw that firsthand as well. I think it was just a shock. I think they were handling it professionally, at least is what I saw, but it was, yeah.
Yeah, no, people, people have been troopers through this whole thing, through all of the difficulties and changes. And I, I, I just, I think I, it has to be said, people have worked extraordinarily hard this year and have dealt with change after change and, and it's so, I, I, for all the reasons you heard tonight, we need, we, we need to take steps forward and at the same, if, if we can, and at the same time, I, I recognize that each change comes with whole new layers of stress and challenge. And, and so, um, you know, I'm sorry if that messaging didn't come out in a way that made people feel, um, informed and, and ready.
I will add as a positive, it, that parents were comfortable talking to their teachers about it. Whether they were pro or against or just had questions and wanted to know, I think, you know, it was an opportunity, a communication channel that was open. That's better than not talking to each other, I guess.
Yeah, I just, let me just grab this. The, the shock factor is what ruffled the feathers and not being able to be prepared. But to a person, every one of them said, of course, we want our kids in class four days a week.
Right, yeah, right. And I'd agree with that, that, that's what I've heard. And, and I've had others that have responded with a thank you because they said, I've been feeling like I needed more information. This is what was needed. And so that was, that was, we're trying to reduce the stress of not having enough information. And on the flip side of that, the way it rolled out, we had some people who felt like they got hit with information that they weren't ready for. So.
So I'll just comment on, uh, kinda related to what you just said in terms of everyone is, wants this to happen and, but is tired and stressed out. And kinda following up on one of the public comments earlier too. In terms of logistics, please don't be afraid to ask for volunteers and specifically from parents. You know, the, even at the elementary level, I mean, that's what PTOs are built for. It's all designed around the concept of volunteering because it's your children. And so you are more than happy to do whatever it takes. Last year during this time, I was just itching for a vol, uh, an opportunity to volunteer to do something. And it just doesn't seem like we do that really well. And maybe I'm, you know, unique, cause I keep thinking back to where I grew up in Montana and maybe that was just different. But it doesn't seem like we leverage our community and our parents to help volunteer in our schools. Oftentimes you'll feel like you're not really welcome, you know, like, oh, no, 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 we got it, we got it. Like, we, we don't, we don't need your, we don't need your help. If you need help moving furniture, if you need help, we, we have trucks all over the place. Most people have a pickup truck and would be more than happy to assist if that's what it meant. It's like, hey, this is what we need to do in order to, to get this stuff moved along. If you need people to volunteer to supervise a lunch period and kids out on the field because you can't make it work in the classroom, so they're gonna eat lunch outside. But to honor what you said, which is you gotta, you know, you need to have those teachers have that protected time, ask for volunteers. I'm guaranteeing you, you will get parent volunteers. What happened with the first Tom Water football game and clearing all the snow off the field?
Yeah.
People don't hesitate when it's something that they care deeply about and they care deeply about this. So I would agree with what the person in the public comment says, don't let any logistics be the thing. You know, that hold, that holds you up and, and also puts a lot of the weight on you all, as the district staff and on the teachers. Please feel free to ask for volunteers.
Thank you.
I can add, I've moved on this a little bit myself and Sean and Melissa are sort of aware of this. But yeah, I've, I have an army of movers that are ready to go. But I've worked with Brian Hinkle, cause we do wanna, you know, make sure we're doing this the right way. We don't wanna just show up and have it be crazy. So, um, I think Brian has it in his pocket. I'm gonna encourage him again through email that he use that because, quite honestly, they're football players and baseball players. So they're already there. It's, they're, the, the, the coaches want them back in. So I think, yeah, I'll back up what Darby said, but I think in some areas, we're already moving on that. I think we can do it in other areas too, for sure, that other people are good at resourcing it.
Fantastic.
I'm wondering though, uh, just in terms of logistics of parent volunteers. I know part, part of it is just background checks and that kinda thing. And I don't want that, you know, we don't need to have all of that, those answers, but if, if, if that is the solution for, um, recess and lunch supervision, letting parents know now so they can go in and fill the paperwork so that can be worked on now, you know, with State Patrol or whoever, whoever does it here. So it's not, oh my gosh, we don't have any part of, I, I get the, I don't want that to be the reason, oh, well, we don't have enough people who have background checks. You know, that, that type of thing. So.
Yeah, I, I know we had, we have throughout this, in our buildings, been limiting access to the building out of reducing the number of people and, and helping reduce anxiety of students, staff, everyone who's in the building and with distancing. So we've had the discussion about volunteers and at what point do we open that door and start? As far the feedback I've received is, be careful about opening that, um, out of just bringing more people in. But where we need people, I mean, that's, that's, that's an opportunity.
Duty-free lunch. You know, it's a great exchange for duty-free lunch, you know, if we can't, or we do not have, we do not have the staffing or the money to hire all the people that we need to oversee all of this.
So we're having those discussions right now on that topic as well as we start to make this topic.
The other thing I, I wanted to say about, um, supports and so, we're, we are looking at different, maybe summer camps or that type of, really is focused on relationship building. With our families and just like the kiddos, they were not interested in summer school. They were more interested in maybe more extracurricular. Clubs meeting over the summer and that we would, we would pay advisors to do that over the summer to bring. Um, and get them engaged before they start in the fall, get them to meet, or get them, you know, um, get them to build relationships. um and get them engaged before they start in the fall, get them to meet or get them, you know, um, get them to build relationships. Rather than coming in and taking a math class or coming in and taking but really just focusing on social emotional learning. So that, those are, and we never would have guessed that that's what our community wanted, never. And it was a, it's a brilliant idea. So I just wanted to, I our staff hasn't seen that feedback yet, but yeah, summer school. Thumbs down, um, especially cause, cause families want summer to, they also want summer, so um and some time off.
Yeah, we're hiring programs for summer enrichment programs. What what does that look?
Coming in and probably getting some academic support. Rebecca, Ella, any ten minutes?
Actually, I think summarize it.
Casey Taylor, do you need more than ten minutes? We'll, we'll see.
I'll keep it five.
Narrowed in on kind of main topics for where we are um at this point with the session. So signed I law stay is April twenty fifth, so. Having bills come through the floor and discussing the amendments that the office chamber has made and, you know, the different areas. And so the three that I kind of wanted to focus on just to say equity, school board, school staff. There's lots of positive support for this um throughout all of the, um, just kind of a general reminder what this to facilitate DEI training for our school board directors incorporated it's not gonna be so has um, you know, info, you know, language now that it's getting closer to these bills becoming final in the session and when are more of the following topics, cultural year inclusion. So I'm sure this will just be one that in the next couple of weeks, once everything gets finalized, then we just start planning this. As far as what that actually, um, the other one is thirteen fifty six prohibiting use of Native American names, symbols, jerseys, mascots and logos. So as a reminder, the this is prohibited, but exceptions to this if certain requirements are met, including consultation with an authorization by the tribes. Um, this would be, uh, oh, so it trying to phase things out and has also established a grant program to help happen. Um, but this is be implemented as of January first of twenty two. So as role if there's an application to us, then we getting going on conversations as it is. So I I will add that, you know, I on these and um there was one in particular where the I got a chance to hear the prime sponsor speak about it and actually, at least for me, it was really encouraged, um, because in addition to the this legislation to dismantle, you know, the harm caused by these sorts of things. Their goal is really to strengthen that relationship between the school tribes and it's exciting to think about it. Opportunity to have that relation and to and so, uh, yeah, I was kind of excited actually, like listening to and so definitely come on that. And then the last one, the big one, of course, is the fiscal. So um, I might actually flip to Sean and if, you know, I get any of this wrong, but the two um primary bills, sorry, I'm having the hard were designed to either backfill and help with um the costs caused by pandemic. Fourteen seventy six is the enrollment stabilization, fifty one twenty eight is the transportation backfill. Um, these were well-written at the beginning. Proceeded through the process, you know, one of them is Senate, one of them is House, um, but they've kind of been stripped away and they're using this, um, you know, the ESSR money as sort of that, hey, why don't you use that first? And uh just just keep using that, you know, and so as Sean mentioned, um, he wrote a really nice letter. I took some just say to Reverend as well and sent that off to the same group a couple of days ago to say, first of all, thank you for what you're doing. But we really have got to have that stable funding. Um, he spoke, you know, a bit about the uh, the challenges with our fund balance. And it it's very clear to continue opening schools, but in order to do that, we've got to have the confidence that we have a stable budget. And the way that this is written right now, um, it's not gonna do it. So interestingly enough, took a peek at the kind of the bill history and summary in both of them. I thought this was in interesting language. So fourteen seventy six, um, it says on the date, the House refuses to concur on Senate amendments, asks Senate to recede from the amendments. Fifty one twenty eight, same thing, Senate refuses to concur in House amendments, asked them to recede. So basically, as those have passed back through, the House of Origin is saying, no, that's not gonna work. You need to, you need to pull your amendments out or we need to keep working on it. So it's encouraging that they're continuing to talk through. But uh, we'll see. We had a a meeting with um legislators on Monday and um Representative Dolan uh shared concerns as well about what had kinda happened specifically to the enrollment stabilization bill. And uh was really hoping that there was a a path forward because as it looked right now, it just wasn't tenable, so. Anything to add on on that?
I would just say, I appreciate Representative Dolan's experience as an administrator in Spokane School District because I think she really understands that funding issue in a way that many legislators just don't, cause that's not been their work. So uh, that was super helpful on Tuesday in a regional superintendent's meeting and then uh, we then took that message forward. And uh, the letter that I wrote has also been shared out with some of them to to give them a a framework for sharing concerns with the the budget leads in the House and Senate, those who are responsible for uh for this negotiation. Cause most of the House members aren't in the room, really. I mean, that that happens with the small group that negotiate that out until it reaches a certain point and then comes out to the larger group.
That's what I got. It's all boiling down to this. Yeah, wow. Um, okay. Any other questions for Darby? Thank you.
That was six minutes.
Casey Taylor?
Okay, this is the WIAA update. Uh, I talked with Tim Graham and Don Farler and got their thoughts and evaluation on how we're doing with athletics so far. So we are in season two currently and and that's going okay. Uh, the kids are doing a great job. Uh, very excited to be back. Uh, participation is down just a little bit, like we've seen consistent, uh, down about ten to fifteen percent, uh, both schools. Um, but we say it's going okay because um, we're not doing a good job with our masks. So I wanna remind everyone, these are WIAA events. These are sanctioned and run by the WIAA. We need to follow their rules and when we don't, the WIAA can shut down events. So even a person uh is authorized to shut down an event that if we are not complying with the way we need to be. So it's just a general reminder that um, this is starting to come up in some areas and some sports. Uh, not necessarily our district, but there's been some other districts in the area that have had some problems with mask enforcement. Um, so we are approaching it as this is a WIAA event and we will enforce it in that manner, so. Uh, so the sports.
Is it, are they students or are they spectators?
No, it's, it's all spectators and parents.
Oh, okay, just I didn't want.
Students themselves are not having a problem.
Okay.
The coaches, the students, and you know, to be honest, ninety five, ninety nine percent of the parents are are doing just fine, too, so. Um, but there is, uh, our athletic directors are spending um way too much time doing mask enforcement and not being athletic directors.
Yeah, that's too bad.
Um, so season two is kind of winding down. On May third, they'll start the playoff or the crossover, um, postseason play, they call it. It looks like we will do another uh league championship in our area and then cross over with the South District. Um, there could be an issue with that potentially, phase two, phase three, if
Oh, Callets.
Is in phase three or gets, but is in phase two, then we could run into some problems. Because when you play these events, you have to play them at the most restrictive phase, which would be phase two. So that would, that would not be very good uh for us. So hopefully they stay out of that. If that does fall apart, I think we would be able to find something else, uh, either more playoff or, you know, we're we're creative about finding games and competition, so. Um, any questions about season two at all currently, the one we're in?
Mine is just a wondering. So I'm watching the news last night and schools up north are playing basketball. And I thought the whole season one, season two, season three, I thought that was like a regimented statewide thing. So not a choose your own adventure.
So so I saw, so I I've seen high schools up north playing football still as well.
Yes.
And wondered the same thing. So I asked Tim Graham that exactly. I'm like, I know that it's gonna be fa- it has to do with the phases and when they start their season. So the WIA was re- regimented about it, but they, you could still, you didn't have to start right away. So you could phase it in and do it when you wanted, or for the the district you're in, that whatever phase you were at. So you had that, and so the ones up north took a little more cautious approach or a little different approach on that, so that's the answer for that.
Interesting.
Yeah, so anymore on season two? Okay, so season three is coming up. Um, this is the one, this is our our higher risk indoor basketball and wrestling. Um, so it is, this is pretty new information. I think it just came out today. Uh, we are gonna be doing wrestling. Um, this will have the most strict protocols I've ever seen and the only thing we have. They will be doing uh two COVID tests per week, each participant. And one of those tests must take place uh on a match day. Um, so there will be regimented COVID testing protocols. Uh, what happens with positive tests is not quite determined yet as to what actually happens and and how they're gonna handle that. They're gonna try to break them in cohorts. So often in wrestling, you'll be by weight class. So smaller kids maybe in a cohort, medium sized wrestlers would be in a cohort and you would kind of practice in those groups. So that way, if there was a positive, it would wipe out the whole team. And there's still um some decisions around if somebody does turn a positive, then are we in the fourteen day? Are we in the ten day? Can they retest again, the other people in the cohort? So there's some little nuances there. Hopefully, we have all negative tests. Um, but they are the rapid tests, it's the rapid ones and there is a high error rate for that. So any test that does go, there'll be a more formalized, uh, like I call it a normal test, I guess, but a a typical test done to confirm the positive as well, too. They treat it as a positive and then confirm it is actually a positive, so.
The good news is, is our, because we have a testing program in the district already, we have nurses trained to get a PCR test as a backup.
So that's and and the athletic directors are gonna look to the nurses. They'll be good friends with the wrestling uh participants for sure, so. So that's good news on wrestling, but um, uh, yeah, so no masks during wrestling.
Oh, wonderful.
No masks during wrestling, but the COVID testing is in place and they were gonna be strict, so there could be. I would be surprised if we wouldn't have some kids get bumped out here and there based on just close contact more than anything, so. They'll bump them out. Uh, basketball, so basketball, yes, we're doing that. Um, the biggest news with basketball is that uh all participants will be wearing a mask at all times. So I've not yet seen a basketball game where they wear masks. I've seen volleyball games, uh, and some colleges.
Watching last night, they're wearing masks.
That's what my wife said as well, too, that she saw it as well. Um, so masks during basketball games. Um, we'll use the same format, wrestling the same way. As far as spectators, we're gonna probably do a two and two. You would get four, four tickets per participant at home. And then on away matches, we would come up with an agreement of doing two. So you'd have two uh tickets to away matches. Um, same thing for basketball. Basketball, we might be able to increase a little bit more because of capacity, might be able to increase that a little bit. Um, but we will not be open, don't throw anything. We will not be opening up basketball games to students. Restrict students from there. Um, there's several reasons for that. We can probably all guess why, but that's it's not their fault. They only do what kids in high school do, so. Uh, so there will likely, at least that's what uh we're planning at this time, so. Uh, and same thing for fa- or season three, will be a crossover season ending um event in the last week. Our issue, though, the last week for the WIAA is June sixth through June twelfth, which there's nothing going on during that week at all, right? So we might have to get creative on start times for games. There could be three o'clock start times, five o'clock start times to allow these kids to, you know, graduate and go to scenery events and and those type of recognitions, so. That will have to be very creative as well, but I think we have two of the best athletic directors in the state, so they'll do just fine. Any other questions?
What is season four?
Season four?
Is there a season four?
We have season.
Season four.
Season four is just, go enjoy your summer.
All right, thank you. Important as always. All right, Scott.
Okay, Equity Advisory Committee, so we met March seventeenth. Uh, and just so the viewing public, and so it goes on record, our next meeting will be next Wednesday, April twenty first at six PM. Again, all are welcome. You do not have to have a history of attending. There is no like loyalty clause or anyone and everyone is welcome. Uh, so just, I cannot remember the the theme of our first breakout, but I just wanted to speak to what was shared in my breakout. And I don't wanna get to the nitty gritty details, but I am gonna take a slight tangent and then I'll bring it back. So at a bus stop, uh, high school students mocking another student for wearing a mask. Um, and I just wanna reiterate what Casey said tonight, that whenever you step foot on school property and that doesn't mean when you walk in the door, that means when you step on the school bus, when you step on school property, outside included. Sporting events, outside included, masks are required. It's not a debate. It is not up for interpretation. It's not because it's seventy five degrees. It's not because it's cold, it's warm, it's raining. Um, it is mandatory. So if we want this to continue for our kids to participate in extracurricular activities, we have to wear our masks. Okay, thank you for listening. Now, to add on to that, these kids then looked at the student and told him to go back to the country from where he came. Um, what's most troubling is the student, most troubling, it's just troubling anyway, most troubling is the student was Native American. So that points to the emphasis and exemplifies why this work is so important. Um, so things are deep rooted. I say things, I'm not gonna go down other definitions and words. I'll just say things. Things are deep rooted in Tonne Water and we have a lot of work ahead of us, but that's why we have this committee. And this committee's gonna keep plugging away. Okay, um, so uh like Sean was mentioning, we have a training coming up on uh April twenty first for our staff. And that's kind of viewed as like a short term fix, cause the long term is the year after year after year where we have um a one oh one class, a two oh one class, a three oh one class, so that everyone is not taking the same level of training. Uh, we have onboarding classes, uh, because you're new to our district. We have advanced classes because you've taken two or three years worth. You know, you wanna be challenged and kind of move up and challenge yourself and challenge the system to get better and better and better. Uh, the question was, we understand that teachers in pairs are being trained. Are coaches, counselors and bus drivers also in that mix? And I think counselors and bus drivers, bus drivers, I'm not sure, but coaches, I think they do definitely need to be in that mix of being trained. Cause this isn't all, it's we're all in on this. It's not just pick and choose. Um, I just wanted to reemphasize the fact that the school board has prioritized multi-tiered systems of support as well as uh positive behavior interventions. And both of those strongly um complement restorative justice. And just so the public, just so you understand, restorative justice is a way of schools seeking to reform a child and the victim's behavior together. But so that education is not in interrupted. We wanna keep the students in class, not be expelling them. Cause when they're expelled, they're not in class, they're not learning. So just something to keep in mind. Okay, so that then led to a discussion around Sean's landing page. And I've been kind of out of the system here for a week or two, so I'm not sure about the Sean's landing page. Maybe you can speak to that in a minute. But this landing page is gonna have five subgroups for the the committee to break off into for future work. Um, so one subgroup on access and opportunity, so those are your multiple pathways for students to be successful. Staff support, that's our PD, PD short term, PD long term. And so we need to have, you know, what are we doing next week? What are we doing next month? What are we doing next year? But also what are we doing in year two, year three, year four, year five, that sort of thing. Uh, representation, so does our workforce represent our student population? Accountability, so there's there in welcoming and safe environment. Now, granted, that was a singular event at this bus stop, but that, you know, broad stroke. Now granted, that was a singular event at this bus stop, but that, you know, broad stroke, whole city. Are we having a welcoming and safe environment? Okay, so then uh breakout two was more on action items, what can we do as a system to take action? So obviously P D is not the ceiling, it's the floor, this is where we're beginning because we have so much work ahead of us. We wanna emphasize the importance of trainers representing our marginalized populations, so. It is my job and so um I can't always be the face of equity training. Cause that's always been the face from previous years, so making sure that our trainers also represent again our broad spectrum. Student conversations. So that they feel that they are being supported, that we have their backs. So when they make that hard decision in the hallway, when they make that hard phone call, they know we got their back. Standing for equity and this is what they have been trained on. Um, let's see. Implement these pieces within the elementary classrooms. The statement was the offerings and my group really like act upon it. Of training as they're kind of working their way through it. And those electives could be using a coined phrase from today, you have choice boards. Are these electives that you can go to clock hours. That will need to be met well. So that could be on the horizon, folks. Okay, Scott kill out.
Any questions for Scott?
Well, I just had a real quick, are we having the district coaches do the training on the twenty first? I don't know that coaches are in that one, coaches, so are it, so the mix is this, um our. Press will be. The bigger challenge are coaches who aren't, and so what we're looking at is, so that's a, that's part of our. Next steps in figuring out how do we get everyone? Um, one way to possibly do that is to record session and training and actually have them. Access that at another time, um so I have to work with athletic directors on what's the ba- best way to reach. For this type of.
Thank you, yes.
That's work ahead.
I'll mention it to Tim too.
A really.
I'm just curious the number of coaches maybe we have that are in.
Yeah.
Large percentage back in the day, but now it's, I know they expanded outwards.
Yeah, I found this the next time and let's do it, but coaches, because we rarely have a time, all of them come together and have uh coaches.
I will look for Scott to make sure we keep that a priority. Cause I think we do need the coaches in that as well. And the kids know that well, that only applies in the building, in the school and they're on the field now and he doesn't teach here and so he doesn't know the rule.
Um, government to government engagement, I sent you, sorry, it took me so long, I don't know why, actually, do you know why? Sent you drafts of letters, um, uh, I. I'm not necessarily a copy and paste person because if they happen to talk, I don't want them to think they got all this, anyone have any? Uh, thoughts or ideas or um suggestions on this path that I'm taking, which is. I just wanna reach out to the tribal chair and I just wanna sit down with, I just wanna sit down with, in this case, him, they're all men. Um, and just have a. Um, I I'm so glad that the bill is is not just about. Punishing um districts, but really opening the dialogue, that makes me feel a little more comfortable with the timing of this. Um, so, uh, that that's the idea. How do we build? Our relationships with each one of these tribes is likely going to be different and I'm okay with that frankly, so. Um, I really just want it to be organic and um based on whatever it is that they feel um they want to engage in, so. Questions?
No, I thought it was really well done, Melissa, um, I did worry. The copy and pasting a little bit, I guess they do, but it is kind of reaching out on the initial contact here, we're not trying to. Send another message, so it is just reaching out, I think they're pretty good.
Thank you. Alright, so I um. I sent them to Becky, so if you can put them on letterhead and make them look nice, um. And do whatever editing you might need to do if to make it all fit on one page. Come in on Tuesday, I can sign them and then we can send them off? Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I feel so much better now this thing hanging over my head, I've been feeling guilty about it, um. Cause I really have been excited about engaging, engaging with them and um figure out what that, what this means. Um, that's, that was the, that was the only update, I think we just um. Move, see what happens.
So one question, so I think it was at our last meeting, maybe we talked about, there's only one. It's like officially attached to where this district sits, the new legislation or whatever. And is it Nisqually, is that the one that's officially?
Yes, it is, it is Nisqually, um, like I, I said, I said in the letter, I'm not exactly. Sure why Nisqually was chosen, uh, I imagine it's like any other state government thing, someone just looked at the map and decided. Nisqually, Squawks and Islands quite offended that it's Nisqually, they. Are, you know, which is why, uh, so, uh. That's why I feel strongly about reaching out to all three and. I also wasn't sure, it's like, gosh, we have districts to deal with, like you're not even on my list, I don't even worry about you, right? And so I, that's why I said, I understand it's Nisqually, um, but we want to work with, we wanna work with you also. So that's why I kind of acknowledged that, because frankly, it's interesting, we're putting a lot of onus on them and there's. Of them and there's so many school districts, so I wanted to acknowledge that they could be busy with other districts that. Um, they're, they're already working with, so trying, that's why it took me so. Trying to show them a res- respect, but also trying to show them that we're interested in working with them.
Yeah, and it's quality. Like six or seven or eight. Districts reaching out to them.
Right, uh-huh, that's true. And uh, and you know, frankly, you know, Bill, with Bill being a Tom Water parent, he has, he, and so he understands. Well, he is assigned to work with. So he's reaching out, but he's also a Tom Water parent, so he.
Say Nisqually or Shalas?
Nisqually.
Oh, I meant Shalas. Sorry.
Oh, in terms of them, the.
As far as the number of districts that are.
Yeah, so, uh, they are probably prioritizing their time as well, but, uh. Know if they want to engage with us or not, so. Also. Got from, um, from Bill about how, about. Without, um. We, we don't, don't know, what, you know, it doesn't really. Do this and it is. The whole idea of it. I reached out to Bill and again, I had an idea what he was thinking and then he said, ooh, no, that's, it's too prescriptive. And so that's why I had to go back and really think about it, so.
Good, really cool.
Thank you. Four moments. Yes.
Uh, might get quick, uh, the hard work for the districts to get us back to school, not back to school, but. Four days a week, um, I know a ton of work going on and it's not. Publicly necessary. Uh, acknowledge that and and then, uh. And then I'll reiterate the, the community helping reopen, I understand there's some logistics we have to work through. Brian too, when I talk, I said, I know there's some logistics we have to work through. Exactly how we dream it up, that's fine, but um I know we'll work.
Everyone's like, whoa. I would like to uh meet with the principals at my two assigned schools at least one more time before the end of the year. Um, I also, it's been on my list for a year, to see if I can actually meet the principals that I haven't met yet. Um, cause that was on my list, did you, and uh, believe it or not, yes, there are some that I have not met in person, so. I hope to see if I can for the end of the year without uh bothering them with everything that's going on. Um, and then the only other thing I wanted to say is that I really, really appreciated that letter that we received from the group of doctors. Or, you know, that offer of help was phenomenal, so I actually uh today wrote back to the the four, you know, that had had sent it to us and. Um, thanked them and shared a perspective which was. Basically that I just really wish we had never gotten to this point of a mental health crisis, I worried about this last summer. When I saw um this hundred and twenty person work group from O S P I putting together this back to school plan and. Just didn't think that there was a consideration for what was gonna happen. There, it was there, it was like, yeah, this pandemic's gonna cause this, but it wasn't, it wasn't built into the operation to say. We know it's gonna happen, so maybe we should try to mitigate it and I just. This entire time, which is. Avoiding the virus above and beyond everything. Um, so thank them again for their um, their willingness to partner with us and actually heard back and said that there. Um, was gonna be a task force, um, that they're putting together, a community task force to focus on this and um. Invited me if I was interested to come, said that each of the superintendents would be getting invitation too and. I said, absolutely, I would love to participate, so very excited um about that, I hope it's something that I can um. Help with and participate in and just have a, have a role. That's what I got.
Thank you.
Mine is quick.
Okay.
So my first, can't stress this enough, we are this evening honoring honoring our elementary school teachers lunch and planning time. Second, can't stress. And they're equal, it's like one A, one B. Is we have to find a way. Enewally celebrate what our staff has done this year. And that can't be an email, it can't be a recording. Pop in, it is like a genuine barbecue, a full fledged. How you made it. It, it's gotta be felt. Really have to celebrate that. That. Now I know, but some way, somehow, just to let folks know.
I thought country, I didn't think movie, got it.
No, just, and it might have to be done, we have a day on the football field. Carnival rides and whatnot.
Ladies.
Somewhere earlier at the meeting, someone said, um, we all want for everyone to. To the four days and I did get a couple of students who are very concerned about that. Are in the, I have a group A. Just that jump to full time and not having. So I don't know if there's, it's possible that an option for those kinds of. Don't wanna go remote, so don't wanna go. If that's even possible.
Are you saying there's kids that are currently in hybrid right now that they like the two day, they don't wanna go the four day, is that what you're saying?
That's a hard one.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a really hard one, because now we, we're, we're asking her to recognize that, I've spoken with. Some students who have said, boy, that, that makes me a bit nervous. And. I mean. Back and and I'll consider it with our team, I, I.
It'd be tough, but it's the two day, the.
Because, because it now means, yeah.
Cause the two days you just do onsite and then you would do remote the other two.
But what, yeah, what, yeah.
But then. Guys' brain going, that's for sure.
I, I think it's, I think it's, I, I think what I appreciate Rebecca is that there are some kid that. We need to hear that there are some kids who don't wanna come back. All we're hearing right now is.
Yeah.
Everyone wants to come back for it. Here, there are.
They felt no, actually the model that was working. The two days and the three day.
Um, so I kind of got. Mention that except for me, um, I'm. Because. The learning model working the best for her and like she, like this. She was just saying like. Like, it'd be a great team, I'm good all, all days and stuff, but that was what um I got from that. So, um, I just wanna. From what I've heard, hybrid is going really, really well and um kids are really doing well. Emotionally, physically. You know, learning well, really actually getting.
Thank you, surprised and I. We all knew that this was gonna be coming, we were hoping it might be coming later and which. You know, we would know to do it for the fall, um. We needed agreements were brought up during some of the public comments, I, but I, I know that you have been communicating. I don't know that we could have gotten to this point if you hadn't been doing that all the way along. Oh, I. Want to credit you with the fact that we're. Thank you for that. Uh, alright, uh, this, oh, sorry, I put my script away, okay, cause we are going to execute. Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Um, so we are now going to recess the regular meeting and enter in. Personal performance evaluation qualifications for. Pursuant to R C W forty-two thirty, one ten, one G. Just to discuss the applicant for our open board position, uh. We'll be in the meeting after this executive, we won't be making any decisions, voting on anything, and so if you. Were watching. Line or attending on a school night, uh, feel free to leave, uh, because you won't be missing anything when we come. Alright, oh, and is it expected to last approximately minutes? Thank you. Thank you.